Alternate, but soon to be promoted.
Wow, he moved fast.
I do.
And actually.
Life in the fast lane.
Considering Mark is not here, you'll be voting tonight.
Okay.
And I'm Vince Messer and I'm a council member.
Board member.
Okay, whatever. Today I'm a board member, yesterday.
He's moving up too.
I'm a member.
John Delio, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
Mike Hany, Board Member.
Matt Utia, New Person Number Two. Slash alternate, hi.
Hiya.
First day on the job, so go easy on him.
Remind you, Matt, too, although you're not voting tonight, you're more than welcome to chime in, ask questions.
Absolutely.
Participate fully.
Yep.
Staff?
Brittany Merrill, Assistant City Planner.
Robert Grant, Code Enforcement Officer.
Adoption minutes from May 7, 2025, did we have that?
Apologies, you know. When we have, when we get a new city planner, you will have minutes again, I promise.
Okay, we'll table that. Item number three, preliminary plan review of a minor subdivision entitled Spring Lots for applicant Tom Benson and the owner, the Anchorage Irrevocable Trust. The proposal is divide the 14.5 acres into three lots. The subject property is approximately 14.5 acres located on Bayside Road, Tax Map One. Lot four located in the rural limited residential shoreline, rural zone and a limited residential shoreline zoning district. Is there someone here representing the applicant?
Tom Benson.
Okay. And who is all yours?
You pretty well summed it up. I've added, I submitted the plan and we had the wetlands guy showed up. He did soils tests and the wetlands. You have in supplemental information summarizing both, but I've updated the map and tried to make it as complete as I can. I think about all I have left on here is we'll set pins, once I get your blessing on the general layout. We'll set the new pins, mark the lines, and I feel we're ready for final review. Final plan.
Yep. Just to point out to the board, this was originally a roughly 23 acre lot. They broke off one lot about a year ago to Ms. Bennett, 8.2 acres. And now they're subdividing the rest into three other lots. Two lots have shore frontage and one is just road frontage. And at this point, it's just, it's just a subdivision of land out here to get permission to build anything.
They're just going to sell the lots and I don't believe they have any plans to do any development. The current owners.
Yep.
What happens after that, I, you know, you don't know.
And I mean, the current owners, just for your information, own a house right across from this piece of property. And like about 126 acres.
Yeah, the Bennett, the southerly eight acres, he owns the farmhouse right straight across the road.
Yep.
Which is, he's one of the trustees.
Straight across Bayside or wherever.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's the old farmhouse.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think they've owned that for at least as long as I've been in Ellsworth, since at least 76.
It's been in that family quite a while.
It was a virgin forest back then, right?
Might have been. Any questions?
Not a one. I mean, you're just, you have a big piece of property and you're cutting into smaller pieces.
Correct.
And all those pieces are reasonable size based on the ordinance and that's it.
On the wetlands map, the hatch doesn't match what you've got on the map in legend? Are these?
You mean it's not color?
Just look, is it, sort of the majority of the wetlands on the site are the special significance or not a special significance?
Well, I, what I did is change the legend. I changed it to black and I kept the map green. I know the registry, I don't know how particular they are on color. They used to be no color at all, but those are the same hatches. I just, the top one is, should be green as well as the bottom one. But yes, they're mostly wetlands of special significance is most of. There's a summary of the wetlands in your information that explains more specific on, that's not my expertise area.
I have no expertise in hash marks, but I'm wondering in the upper right side, Lot One, what is the difference between those, I assume, wetlands and the others?
Well, that's the lower hatch in the legend. Those are wetlands not of special significance.
Okay.
But you'll have, I can.
I think it's because it's so small.
Refer you to his summary, Roger's summary.
So I have a question. When you were talking, you said it was splitting off two lots, isn't it splitting off three? So Bennett was the one they pulled off last year?
Yes.
And so then they're going to make one, two, and three.
Yes.
Out of the one lot. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So I'm looking at this where the existing road is that leads to the house at the bottom.
Jones.
On the water. Is that the road that these lots are going to use and have a right of way? Or are they going to have to develop their own?
You're talking the lot that, a road goes through Lot Three?
Yes.
That, the Jones lot has a right of way to the road. And in the deed, it says together with a right of way from the main road. It doesn't really, the Jones lot does not specifically meets and bounds locate that right of way. But this has been used, this roadway to Jones has been used for such a long time. I think that's the accepted right of way for Jones.
But I think Jones, as I said.
Well, yeah.
If I'm correct, I think that the current road, you're going to use that to access Lot Two, correct? Because I believe I read that in the.
No, the Lot Two, we would like to use the road on the north side, which they have a right of way over, starting.
Okay.
On Lot, the corner of Lot One will come in and to a point to the west line of Raymaker. They would have the option of going in anywhere there and then making their own driveway on their.
So you have to create your own road from that point on.
You would, yeah. That would create your own road. Lot One has two options. They can come in that driveway or I would, you know, I'm just guessing. They would probably make their own driveway off Bayside Road for Lot One. It could be that Lot Three may, with the wetlands, they may come in near their south line of Lot Three. Come down through, that would be less wetlands impact because they're going to have to cross. They use this existing driveway, depending on where they build. They use the existing driveway, they want to build down near the water, which is pretty sure that they'd probably just come in the driveway and get south of, west of the wetlands and then go into their, a new driveway spurring off.
Yeah, so I guess I just want to make sure that each of the lots has a methodology, either one or two methodologies to have a right of way or direct access. So one could have direct access off Bayside, so now you have a new driveway off Bayside. Or come in on that northern road, they do have a right of way there, one?
Well, the, the beginning part of that northern road.
Is on the property. Okay, and then two has to.
Two will come in across Lot One, down along the existing roadway.
And they will have a right of way in their deed to do that?
Yes. Yeah.
And then three can do.
Three can either come down the existing driveway that they'll own, or they can come off Bayside Road.
And Jones won't be prohibited from that in any way?
No, you can't, can't prohibit him from.
Okay.
Access.
You said that, I mean, the owners at this point are just doing this to sell them.
Yes.
And so, I mean, at this point, I mean, depending on if somebody buys it and what they decide to do with it is, I mean, what they decide to do with is out of our purview at this point.
Well, it would be between, you know, the code enforcement officer, they'd get a building permit.
Yeah, well, depends on what they, I mean, there are things that they could build on these lots that would need planning board approval, but if it's just a single family house, obviously, obviously it falls to code enforcement.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're not dealing with that issue.
They haven't told me of any plans. I think they just like to sell things out.
Are these, looking to that kind of future thing, are these a lot subdivided?
What is the.
They, they could be. I think the minimum lot size will allow actually several lots in addition to what's shown here.
As long as they meet the ordinances.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah. I mean, but the, but the thing is that they, yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
Yeah, there are ways you could draw the map up and subdivide this out again without having to worry about shore frontage too.
I guess it would depend, I mean, the owners could specify in their deeds that the lots are not subdivided. I mean, that's all depending on what they want to do.
Yeah, they can put restrictions on it. I can ask about restrictions.
And are they having any kind of desire to have any kind of deed restriction on the size or type of dwelling at all?
They haven't said anything, but I will, I made a note to ask them if they want to put any covenants on it.
Yeah, that would be important.
If they want to do it, that'll be the time to do it.
Yeah, yes.
Especially if, you know, they don't want to see half a dozen houses between the farmhouse and the water.
Yeah, the farmhouse lives across the road, so I, he may have a vested interest in what he wants to see there.
Because once you sell them, you lose all control.
Yep.
So.
Now, Tom, I mean, we've got a little, little packet of additional information tonight. Do you anticipate anything else coming in between now and the final?
I'm waiting on inland fisheries letter. I have the other two state agencies, forestry and historic, we're okay with everything. But I'm still waiting on inland fisheries. I submitted them all at the same time, but just haven't heard back from them. Got the well, well drilling opinion, P.L. Jones. And I've got Roger's wetland summary and his soil summary. And the additional, I just didn't have them when I initially submitted. I just wanted to give you guys as much as I could, as soon as I could.
Based on what he still has left to give, does that complete the package?
Yeah, as far as I know, yeah.
We have another question, just curious. Is there any intention to let the new lot owners have any access or right of way to any of the frontage on the river? Or no? As a condition of the sale that they get access to an area?
I guess it would only be Lot One that would be affected. Lot Two and Three have road, shore frontage.
And they have frontage.
Yep.
They have frontage. I'm not sure, I can ask on that, but I know they're working with a realtor, so we'll figure out covenants and see if Lot One will have any access to the water.
Any other questions?
No.
Narrowly a one.
Open to the public hearing, if there's anybody here who'd like to address the board, please come up and introduce yourself.
My name is Catherine Raymaker. And my husband Edward and I live at 775 Bayside Road on the property immediately abutting Lot One and part of Lot Two in the proposed subdivision plans. And I want to tell you that I've, I'm very, my brain is spinning because I've spent the last two weeks trying to find some legal counsel to take a look at my deed and to assess the easement rights and obligations that before us as the abutting property owners there. And it was only today at 12 noon that I finally found an attorney at the Acadia Law Firm who is going to take a look at my documents and try to tell me if legally there are any problems for me or I assume not for the sellers of these properties. He did take a look at a statement, I'm going to read you in a few minutes, and I have copies for you later. And he did say that judging from what I put on here, he would say, yes, there are going to be issues for my husband and me. And very impactful issues. And he felt that we did need to have some legal advice on this. But he also said, and I kind of suspected that it's not the purview of your board to judge this, what I'm, what is, you'll hear is probably a legal matter. And I want to address Tom Benson before I start because I wanted to come to you, but I was struggling because I didn't know if there was an issue and I didn't want to bother you until I got legal counsel. And also.
It's not a problem.
I thought, I didn't know if it was ethical either.
No, you're, this is, this is your right of way too.
So this is your first time hearing it, and even though it's something the board probably can't deal with, it is something that I was told by the lawyer, his name was Daniel Pellegi, that this is a time to bring it up, if it was ever going to be brought up. And I will, I would love to speak with you privately if we could, Mr. Benson. Okay. Forgive me reading it, but I, I can't trust my memory at this point.
Do you have copies, do we get copies?
Yes, you do. You do get copies. But, but you know, if, if you're reading it while I'm, please make sure Mr. Hany has this. This whole, whole packet is Mr. Hany's. This is my testimony. And this is the testimony I'm going to read. And I'm also going to reference an easement, Mr. Pel, uh, Mr. Benson, that's for Mr. Benson. And it's got everything in it. This is for the board. This is a quote, unquote easement that I'm going to refer to. That's in our deed. And yes, and this is a, I don't know if I made quite enough. And this is a copy of what I'm going to speak to you about, maybe making little assigns if it comes up. Okay. All right, as I said, my name is Catherine Raymaker and we live at 775. And we abut Lot One and part of Lot Two of the proposed subdivision plans. Now, the right of way described in the easements that are contained in the application runs mainly through our property, except, except for that small triangular piece of land at the northeast corner of the proposed Lot One. That little triangle right in front of our, to one little side of our front yard is the section of the right of way giving access to Bayside Road. Now, we have lived at that address for the past 47 years. This is our first and only home and our first and only real estate. During the time, we have always used the triangle as the exit driveway from our residence and as an access to the rest of the side road, that right of way on our land, believing we had the right to do so. It's also the safest way to exit our property along a very dangerous stretch of Bayside Road. There've been many accidents in front of our house. Our pet was killed out there. There's a blind hill and it's very hard to see any cars coming from Ellsworth and the cars going from Trenton, can't see over that hill either, hence lots of accidents. Okay. And during the time, those 47 years that we lived there, we, we've never been contacted by the owners of the property immediately south of ours about this matter or any other matter. My husband, Ed, is very friendly and he has met the two trustees of the Anchorage Trust and he's met Charity Phillips way back in the old days. So he's, he, last year, they were even nice enough to let my husband learn about their wedding that they were having in a field and even invited him to come down into the field. So we've had, he's had a little bit of social contact with them and we feel they are very nice people. And that might impact on what I'm going to say too. All right. And so when I said no contact, I meant official contact or any other, but, but we have had some contact, okay. When we got notice about this hearing, we reviewed the documents we have pertaining to the purchase of our home in May 1978. Specifically, what obligations and rights we have regarding that right of way. We, then here I put in that we had tried to find legal counsel and we did, well, by now we have. So the evening, this evening, we're going to tell you the facts as we understand them, but we still need to get legal interpretation of what we are telling you. And we're going to sign an agreement with the law firm in order for them to do that for us. All right, first, let us assure you that we're not going to dispute the subdivision. We, we have, let me see, we're not going to dispute the subdivision of the parcel of land being considered here this evening. Our main concerns are really for the two things that matter most to us. Safeguarding our ability to use the little triangle of land, not only for ourselves, but for whoever eventually inherits or buys our property and hopefully it will be our door to care someday. And then also, I'm going to hand you a document later, and, well, no, yes, it'll come up later. But I also would like to clarify that demarcation of a 30-foot right of way for all purposes of a way over the other, the other land that we own, which you'll see doesn't appear in a document we were given. Okay. So I need clarification and hopefully some kind of a safeguard for our exit and use of that little triangle. And then it says, if it happens that there's a legal issue involved, we would like to appeal to the present owners to allow us to resolve the matter before the deed for Lot One is drawn up. We would much prefer discussing this with the present owners who we have at least met a few times than beginning our relationship with new neighbors with a property negotiation. Okay. And here is my story of why we have these concerns. These are facts as they unfolded for us sequentially. And I do have documents supporting all of these facts that I will give you on request. All right, we were officially deeded our property on May 12, 1978 in book 1301, pages 155, 156, and 157. Now, during all the pre-sale discussions and negotiations with the then owners, the existence of easements by and for Charity Phillips Wolf's never was mentioned. Their existence was also not noted in the title search conducted by an attorney assigned to us by bank or savings bank. We said, oh, well, we don't know anybody in Ellsworth, so they assigned this lawyer. And the results were never conveyed by mouth, but by a letter to us, which I do have. The map of our property we were given also did not indicate a right of way. All right, now here's the sad tale of the stupid naive people. On the day of the closing, neither the sellers nor supposedly our attorney was present. We were there by ourselves. We signed all agreements without reading the deed. I admit it. How stupid can you be because we never suspected any problems? Ever since moving to Maine two years before, we had been treated so decently that if anything, our trust was at high levels. Okay. When we went to our new home and read the deed, we found this paragraph in Exhibit A. Quote, "Subject to a right of way over the private driveway running along the southerly bound of the premises herein described from the granters herein to Charity Phillips Wolf by instrument dated January 31, 1978 to be recorded in the Hancock Registry of Deeds." Okay. Next step, when we confronted the former owner about this, he provided the document we are distributing copied to you this evening.
Brittany, have, have people received that copy?
Thank you. Okay. Please note in that copy, the document has the same wording as the easement recorded in book 1331, page 330. That's in the application, except the document we were giving is missing the paragraph describing the 30-foot right of way. He also told us verbally that the right of way had been given to Charity Phillips Wolf in exchange for use of the driveway, which he had constructed on her land without prior permission and is within the easement triangle of land on today's proposed Lot One. And when we confronted way back then, that attorney who was supposedly representing us about the document, he said, oh, all was in order. And once again, the dummies believed him. Okay. Now, to prepare for tonight's hearing, we tried to find a copy of the document dated January 1, 1978 at the Hancock Registry of Deeds. But even with extensive help by Clerk Lori Whitney, we were unable to locate any such document. And she did a search from January 1, 1978, right through May 31, 1978, to looking for that document. Given that our deed signed on May 12, 1978, which supposedly conveys all rights, easements, privileges, and appurtenances belonging to the granted estate, that deed predates the easements accompanying the subdivision application. And given our inability to obtain the January 31, 1978 document, we are very confused about the legal standing of our rights and obligations regarding the right of way. And we are wondering tonight, Mr. Benson, if you or if there were another representative of the owner here can shed some light on the matter from your point of view.
It seems the intent was there to convey everybody's right of ways view across Wolf and your lot for Wolf down through your lot. It seems the intents were there, it looked like the deeds were conveyed out of order. Your lot with your lot, your present house lot, looks like it was, I've just looked at these just now.
I know, I know.
But your lot appears to have been conveyed first in May, was it?
May 12.
So the two right of way deeds you're talking about, 1331, 29, and 30, those were conveyed both in September of the same year, 78.
One was in.
August. The first one was in August. It looks like the intent was there, but things were conveyed for some reason. Maybe Frank Walker forgot. He conveyed the law and he said, oh, jeez, I, I forgot to convey these. The intent is here. I think we've got willing participants to get it the way it should be. You've used that right of way, I'm not a lawyer.
I know that.
But you've used that right of way so long, you, the Wolf cannot just go shut it off. You've got.
But I'm worried about my daughter.
Well, don't worry. Well, we'd like to work this out. I can't speak for the Wolf, Mr. Wolf and Mr. Bennett, but I'm sure they'd like to work it out. In their mind, they think this is a done deal and I haven't talked to them specifically about this right of way, but I will do so. Mr. Wolf is in Arizona as well as Mr. Bennett, so I have to be careful when I pick the phone up. The three hour delay, so I don't call them at 4:00 AM. But I will get in touch with them and I, if you want to talk after the meeting, we can. And I'll get your number and so.
I would love that and I'm very reassured by what you're telling me.
Well, I can't speak for them, but what little bit of.
But I will have some legal help now.
Yeah.
So that you can figure out what's really going on here and try to safeguard that ability for us to use our own driveway.
Well, yeah, you've used that so long that even maybe you don't have a clear deed. You have used that, you have prescriptive rights, you've used that for so, 47 years. And Frank used it before, I assume, so.
Yeah, he did.
There is precedent there to continue to use that, so.
And could you find out, well, the 30-foot too is another thing that I don't, I don't, if it's single family homes, fine. We already have neighbors up the shore and we're on good terms with them and they have the right, a right of way. But if, as the nightmare can be seen, that. But if, as the nightmare can be seen, that, that those subdivisions are going to be subdivided and subdivided. We could have, you know, a twelve-unit motel down there and traffic going by all day. Or thirty feet, they could say, we're going to dig into your septic tank. Or they could say, oh, we need room for the construction vehicles to turn around and take it off our land rather than theirs. I don't know if we can talk about that one because I was, we were very misled about that one.
If we're going to redefine this right-of-way, it would be a good time to make it more defined, you know, more precise.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can work with your lawyer and you and Mr. Wolf and try to figure out how to.
But this is something that has to be resolved between the property owners. And not really our purview here.
No, but we, we need to.
No, no, I get that you're going to do all that.
We need to get it straight.
No, and I agree with that.
Yeah.
But I'm just also saying that, you know, it's, it is between the property owners.
It's not a planning board issue, right?
I believe that's the case.
But we need to.
Yeah, we want to make sure that the, that the subdivision gives them access and doesn't do harm to the neighbor.
Right, in theory, they have access because they, on a road, though.
Yeah, but we need to make sure we have a clear, precise right-of-way.
I agree, I agree, but I'm, what I'm saying, suggesting is that it, it's really something that has to be resolved by the property owners.
Yes.
Because then the next, the other thing too is that in looking at that, that's, the roads to me are an issue only because if you're sharing a road, sometimes. It creates problems between neighbors and before that happens, better to straighten them out first. And like if they're, if she's using the lot one's right-of-way that she should have, I mean, I'm looking at the page you printed, the, the old tax map, the old deed that talks about that. And now if lot one or perhaps lot two uses the right-of-way that's on her property, the road that's on her property. Then it can be, who's maintaining the road, who's, you know, if they're damaging the road, now do we have any kind of deed restriction to have them be part of a group effort to maintain the road?
Yeah, it's definitely the time to say a road association or a clear language.
So, so I have a question. On your map that you've given us, in that upper right, upper left-hand corner. In small lettering, it says easement book three-thirty-one, page three-twenty-nine for Raymaker Lot. Do we have a copy of that?
Yep, it's in the back of the book.
It's in the very back of your deeds. I included all the deeds Charity conveyed to her sons in one-fourteenth interest, so the fourteen deeds.
And thank you for that.
And then after, at, at the end of that is the two right-of-way deeds thirteen thirty-one, twenty-nine and thirty.
Does that three-twenty-nine or page three-twenty-one clarify the easement issue any, or is it still muddied?
It's, it's a description, I wouldn't say it's crystal clear, either one of those, but it does describe a right-of-way and. It's perhaps could be clearer.
Okay.
If, I think we have a order of recording issue, but again, that's lawyers' area, but.
Sort of put your mind at ease, Mr. Raymaker, this is only a preliminary, okay? So you still have to come back again and hopefully within that time, you can get this squared away. To, to kind of help settle your concern a little bit, you've got, you've still got some time to work with them. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
I have a question for Robert because I'm not familiar yet with stuff. With a thirty-foot right-of-way and if that's the maximum that the right-of-way has, doesn't that sort of limit the amount of growth potential? Unless that was like for thirty feet wide, you can't build.
Yeah, you couldn't build a highway there or anything.
Right, so it limits it to pretty much small residential type construction because it's only thirty feet wide. It's not sixty, it's not fifty. So that, that in itself might keep things.
Yeah, I, with only a thirty-foot right-of-way, I mean, I, again, I'm not a lawyer, but I, I don't foresee that. Causing a, a huge housing development in there with a, with a thirty-foot right-of-way.
Right.
Yeah, and also the wetlands on the map do also limit a lot of what's able to be built in there, especially on lot two. So.
Tom, I've got a question on the easement that's on the north end of lot one that goes down like along the boundary line. I mean, it starts in lot one and goes into the Raymaker Lot and then, so does the Wolf's have right-of-way over the entire length of that dotted?
They have to the end of Raymaker. That was the intent, the, the distance kind of overshoots it, but yeah, it would go to the west line of Raymaker.
It says in that deed four-two-hundred-and-twenty feet.
Yeah, it's a little further, but you can't go beyond Raymaker's line, that's.
Okay, but then it also has easement number two between, it looks like between the road and.
One of the easements is specific to the road and then the other one describes the gap between the road and the line.
Because you said lot two would be able to access, an owner of lot two would be able to access that lot through this easement?
Yes.
Because there's actually two easements, the road and then a wooded easement, basically.
Yeah, there's the road, it's, the easement is in two parts. The road itself and then the area from the road to the line.
Between the road to the boundary line.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it was, I think that was done without the benefit of a survey, it was just written. I'd say the attorney probably just wrote it.
Sounds like that was done in nineteen hundred.
Well, no, it was nineteen.
Well, I'm surprised that the title report couldn't, you know, catch these things, quite frankly. Because they, when, when you do title reports, you catch a lot of stuff.
Well, that's the whole purpose.
Yeah, exactly, right, and it's kind of like this is sort of a blatant miss in that way.
What it kind of sounds like, Brittany, maybe you can facilitate the meeting between Mr. Benson and the Raymakers to. It seems like this is a simple problem to solve.
Yeah, yeah.
And we sort of want to make you, you folks happier with, you know, with what's proceeding.
Thank you, it's comforting to hear that.
Is there a statute someplace about, I'm sorry, go ahead. Is there a statute someplace about how long something has to be in use to, you know, to kind of be there for ever, if you will?
I think it's twenty years, you talked about prescriptive rights, I think it's twenty years.
To exercise, to cement prescriptive rights, I think you have to go to court. But the fact they've used that so long, the, the Wolves can't get somebody to put rocks there. They've got precedent for using that right-of-way so long.
Yeah, but I think you're right, I think, I think if they use it for twenty years and go to court and say, hey, look, and we've used this, this piece, actually, it could even be a piece of property.
Right, you can't deny it then.
Not just a road, but it could be, you know, one acre piece of property and said, well, we've used this as our home for the last twenty years and they can get it.
And it is, and it isn't twenty years, I mean, that's.
I'm not sure the timeframe, it, it could be less than that, but they definitely, they've, they've used it forty-seven years. Frank Walker was there before that, so.
So, and that was in use then before they purchased the property?
I assume so, it talks about the right-of-way across Wolf going to Frank Walker's house.
So that's got to be defensible, but they get to keep it, right, under the access?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't see how they can take it away.
No, I understand that, nor am I.
Yeah. I'm sure there's no intent to take a right-of-way.
Okay. But you'll get it resolved, clarified.
Yeah, we, we want to have it resolved before we come back.
There you go.
I'd say the intent was there, the intent is here for sure, just not spelled out clearly, that's all.
And lot two won't have any problem since there's no direct, it's just past their property line, you're going to make sure that that's clarified too? Because lot two, it, it doesn't touch their property.
Well, the easement number two of page three-thirty, that takes in the area from the road to the line.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure lot two is protected.
Yeah.
Just as, as an aside, that you might know this as the, as the surveyor. It's still okay to sell landlocked lots, right? Or not?
I don't think you can. I don't know who'd want to buy a landlocked.
No, I don't either, but you know.
I've got fifty acres in Trenton if anyone's interested in landlocked peace.
So, so conversely, you know, we're dealing with the Raymaker access to their property. With lot two, I'm not sure how this deed reads or whatever, but in order to access lot two. Whoever's going to own that is going to have to traverse on the Raymaker property, that road that's there. So is there a deed that says that lot two is going to be able to traverse their property to get access? I mean, is that something else that have to be addressed?
It, it's the same issue with, with the Raymakers. There was kind of a reciprocal easement.
Yeah.
Raymaker or Walker crossed Wolf to get to his house. And then in exchange, Frank intended to convey to Wolf, just did it, I guess in the incorrect manner.
Yeah.
Right-of-way from across Raymaker down to the Raymaker's west line.
Yeah.
And the road and the gap between the road and the line. That's why it's split up into two different descriptions in book page three-thirty.
Okay.
So somehow you'll figure out all these errors and omissions and get them straightened out so that lot one, lot two and the Raymakers end up with the right terminology and the right right-of-ways and the right whatever to satisfy that nobody's landlocked and nobody's ten feet away from accessing their property and stuff.
Yeah, the, the only, we'll straighten out the Raymaker, Wolf right-of-ways and the other two have road frontage. So, yeah, there will be nothing landlocked.
Yeah, three, three has, yeah.
And Jones will continue to use the existing road like they have quite some time.
And Jones is the one that's always, the little one, the down, down water.
Little camp lot, yeah.
Do you have anything else, ma'am?
No.
All right, thank you.
So this looks all resolvable and in an amicable fashion.
Sounds like it.
Potentially.
So ma'am, after the meeting, why don't you give your phone number to Brittany and then she'll facilitate a meeting, you know, between you and Mr. Benson?
Well, I can talk to him for a minute.
Okay, exchange.
Yeah.
I'll make sure they connect.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
I guess as you guys review this plan, if you see anything else needs to be changed or added, let me know. When I come to the next meeting, I'd like to have it be as final as I can.
As would we.
To not go into extra meetings because I forgot something.
Take care of this and there should be no problem.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? No, I'll close the public hearing. Anything from code or planner?
Think a motion that the preliminary plan review be accepted for completeness for minor subdivision entitled spring lots for applicant Tom Benson and owner the anchored, the anchored erode. Erucable crust, never mind.
That's easy for you to say.
Yeah, well, it was, but, you know. So that's my motion, I think it's due in though.
Thank you, folks.
And I hope that's, makes you happy, or. He seems so, so, she's smiling, so I, I think hard work here is done.
Brittany, any staff comments?
No.
Okay.
I haven't set anything on fire and nothing's exploded, so we're good.
Any updates on whether we're ever going to hire a planner?
Potential, Sarah usually handles that and I'm not sure how much I should say. But we did have a second interview with an applicant in person and it seems like she would be a good fit. So we'll see if we offer and if she accepts. Hopefully we'll have someone new in the planning department by the end of next month.
And the development director starts on Monday, right?
Yes, Twyla starts on Monday, we're very excited.
The offices will all be filled.
At this point, I, what's the next step in the recreational marijuana? We got another meeting coming up on that or?
Nothing, nothing that the board is required to go to. On the twenty-fourth of June, we do have a meeting tentatively scheduled for a public listening session with the Office of Cannabis Policy. They're going to have two members showing up via Zoom. I'm inviting business owners that are, have potential interest in opening shops in Ellsworth. And we're also going to reach out to the public to have people come in and give their feedback if they'd like. No one's, there's no required attendance for that one, but we also, we don't have a schedule yet for July, but that will be the second combined session.
Okay, so what time, the twenty-fourth, what time is that?
Uh, it'd probably be six o'clock, I would imagine, we don't think we've set a time yet.
For the listening session, I'm sorry?
Yes, I believe it'll be six.
And have you started to, you know, gather ordinances from other towns?
Yes. We have.
And what do you figure I'm doing without it, I mean, distributing all them to us or?
Probably by the.
Pack them all before you send them to us or?
We'll, we'll have a packet together for the second combined meeting.
No date yet on that.
I know, I would imagine near the end of July because no, no one's going to want to meet around the beginning of the month because it's the holidays and, so. But I would imagine somewhere around the end of the month in, in July, that would be the second, the second meeting, combined meeting.
And somebody will make sure if these have to be public meetings to publicize them.
They, they, they don't, they don't technically have to be, but we will, we will have them posted.
I mean, the meeting we just had, I don't think technically had to be a public meeting.
No, it didn't, it didn't, but we, we, we will make sure that they are so that everybody has a chance to attend if they'd like.
And this is literally just listening.
This, yeah, it's, it's to whoever's interested from the planning board and the city council coming, there's not going to be any real. Anything actionable they're going to do, of course, but it's just to hear what OCP has to say. The prospective business owners that would like to come in, their experiences in other towns. You know, what works, what doesn't, where they, where they would like to see the businesses allowed, how many, that sort of thing. I'm sure, I'm sure business owners are going to say, we want a hundred of them. OCP might give a different story of what works for a town and what doesn't. You know, living in these certain areas or how many you can have, what number works best for your population. But that's, it remains to be seen, we'll see what they say in a few weeks. We'd like to have it all wrapped up, hopefully by September at the latest.
So it might be, if, if y'all have nothing else to do on the twenty-fourth, I would suggest it might be a good idea to come to the listening session.
You, you can attend in person or online, we, we will live.
Even better.
We will live stream it on YouTube, so.
Oh, YouTube, okay, not Zoom.
It's Monday, right?
What's that?
Not Zoom, but YouTube?
Well, you, you could attend if you would like to, via the Zoom, where it's typically meetings, but yes. But you could watch it, but not have the ability to participate via YouTube. You could, you could participate in the comments, but not live in the meeting.
Understand. The key area for it.
Brittany, you'll send that information out at appropriate time?
Soon as I can, yes.
Yes, you can. Okay. Anything else?
That's all I've got.
We have plans from fifty-nine Franklin to sign too, so please sign them.
Stick around.
That'll be it then, it'll be done?
I hope so.
For now.
You're a record, it's like swearing, you know.
I haven't said that to you.
That's why you, you say for now.
I'm, still need more practice.
I guess I got one other question. Any other feedback or from the Bowlin Alley project? I mean, they, they talked about coming back, splitting it up, have you heard anything back from them?
No.
I haven't, no.
But I should check in. I will check in and see.
I mean, they can proceed as, as they got approved, if they have the financing for it. That's up to them, maybe the ones that brought up coming back and changing it.
Yeah, no, it's been radio silence, so.
Okay. Okay.
You good?
Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ballot table?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.